This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board at 6:01 PM. And we have all three members present here in Town Hall for the first time in a couple of weeks.
Yay!
The first order of business is meeting with the Human Resource Director, Sophia. Thank you for joining us. We've been doing monthly meetings for a little while and we haven't met in a little while. And a couple items came up that I thought we could talk about with the board and with you. And just hear any updates that you want to give us from the past couple of months. I will start if no one else wants to. You raised to, you raised to the board an email. The department had meetings and how attendance has not been perfect at them. And I, I've been thinking on it since you sent it, the email. And I think one thing I talked with you over the phone was just that we have so many employees in different departments with different schedules. And some people, you know, for some people are, are here during normal work week and some, some employees are here at different times. They might have a normal work week job. And one idea, just throwing it out there, trying to accommodate both the need and the desire to get together, leaders together and go over whatever's going on. And also the different schedules. One idea would be to, that I had and I'm just throwing it out there, but would be to rotate, to schedule the meetings. I understand that it's, it's helpful to have them at the same time every month, but it also, but it might be helpful in a different way to sometimes meet on different days or at different times so that you can catch a different audience. It's just one thought. And then the other thought that I had is, we kind of talked right now, I forget whether they're mandatory or compulsory, but how it can be hard to rein in someone who may be essentially volunteer into a compulsive or mandatory meeting, especially if they're not scheduled to work at that time. And one idea that I had, again, just throwing it out there, would be to make them mandatory for any employee that's scheduled to work at that time and strongly encourage for anyone who's not to balance kind of those two needs.
Are we talking about the department meetings?
Department head meetings.
Or, okay, not the, the big meet training on August 1st, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think you know, in some ways it's the same vein where, or the same issue. And that meeting has probably a bit more importance than the monthly meetings that are kind of for general updates and general problems because it's an important mandatory kind of training for all town employees and officials. But maybe kind of the same ideas come, come into play where scheduling at different times. I know I booked one of the two slots with you, but I also said that an evening would have been preferable to me. And with the notice, some people can change around their other commitments and some can't. And just being realistic, what's the best way to incorporate everyone?
Sometimes you're limited by when the trainers can do it.
Yeah, and so I really want to keep both meetings separate because I do find that they are kind of for different purposes underlying at least. So the department meetings are to develop a better culture within the town too. So they have kind of a different level of importance for different reasons. It's to bring our like leaders together, not only learn something new perhaps, but also to just have that camaraderie that not one department is more important than the other, but we're all working on something and to kind of get a glimpse into each other's worlds and remember that we're actually a team with the same goal and not our own little islands everywhere. So that's why I'm just hoping that I have the Select Board support moving forward with them. And I don't think there's a one size fits all approach to that. I know we talked about specific instances where kind of things need to be kind of assessed on an individual basis, at least for the department head meeting. But, but I'm willing to be flexible also. I'm always taking feedback from how things are going moving forward progressively with each meeting and what I can change and kind of make them better. So I'm definitely open to making the times different. It's just my reservation with that is that it's hard enough to commit to like one time. And I'm booking these meetings out for like the year. I think I booked out like four and then we're doing every other month at this point, right?
So that's consistent for right now.
Right, so I'm just like booking out far in advance. And I mean, at a certain point, everybody was able to come. So I'm, that's kind of just where I want to leave it for the department head meetings. Now, this training is, the August 1st training is of different importance. It's, they're both important, but in somewhat different ways. So especially for front-facing employees, it's important that we hold them to a higher standard. This topic is of utmost importance and it may not be required by the state as of yet, but we're close behind. Like Connecticut is already mandating this, so it's good to be ahead of the curve. And we're liable for all our people and it's always going to be better that we say like, our people were trained, they know, rather than something going down and us saying, well, we, we said it was like suggested or highly recommended, but they didn't really show up. So I just also was hoping for support with that as well. But as we were talking about in the finance meeting, I think it does bring up new questions about maybe certain accommodations that can be made or policy changes that should be discussed. Maybe something on a more broader scale of like mileage. So if it isn't conveniencing a part-timer to a really high degree and the, don't quote me on this for a policy because it definitely has to be more in stone than this, but we could offer them mileage along with just a set pay for showing up and being there for the training. I would be open to a discussion on that. Obviously, again, I don't think it's going to be a quick fix idea. It's probably going to need to be settled on in like a policy format, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it sounds like you're, you're already thinking that, in that direction of how to accommodate and encourage maximum attendance at work trainings. I don't have all the answers.
Oh yeah, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I offer something? I know. The issue of the monthly meetings, I'm a big fan of that and I think it's great that they're every other month, but I think we also have to face the reality that we are also facing in the finance committee, that all departments are not equal. You know, some are more full-time, have bigger budgets, have more challenges. So in these situations, sometimes we create like a group of five or a small group of like those bigger agencies or bigger departments that have more of these concerns that they as a cohort can meet maybe every month. And then all the others, volunteer heads, the small departments, maybe it's other, every other month. Because if people aren't coming and you're mandating, it means one of two things and you know what they are, right? They're not finding value or they're way too busy to do it. You know, they don't find it important. So we want, I, I love what you said, we want the cross-pollination. We want them to understand we're all in this together, but maybe there's another way to kind of slice it, you know, to make that, that happen.
Maybe, maybe. I'm a little discouraged, but, well, you know, you have to build from the bottom up. Well, that's what I'm saying is there's no precedent set for anything like this in the town as of yet. So without backing and kind of saying this is what is expected as a, as part of your job description, then I have very little faith that we can hold them to it. And I understand, everybody's always going to be busy. It's part of making this into the normal like routine of things. And that's where I just, I was feeling the growing pains of it right now.
But as I, and I went over with it you before, Sophia, but there is a difference between someone working in the building, you know, in a department, maybe a finance department during budget season or something, where they just say, I'm too busy to go to the meeting, but they're currently being paid by the town versus someone who works usually in the evening and they're, you know, working miles away at, at a full-time job or something. And so those are kind of two different situations of busy. And how do we accommodate the, the varying, the diverse schedules that we have? But, but we're still bringing everyone together. I just don't want to see the, the meetings fall apart because not, because of lacking attendance.
Right.
And then they're not helping anyone.
And I've, I've made accommodations like our building commissioners zoomed in for various meetings and that's fine because they're making an effort and they're still there and like to a certain degree. So I mean, it's just, otherwise I'm just frustrating, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I offer one more thing? Because I know from the finance committee's perspective, and we've been talking about rolling out the zero-based budgeting and all the things, but we would love to be helpful about, you know, maybe bringing some topics in. So, you know, maybe there are ways also to spice up the meetings. But I, I think we talked about going through the committee, through all the departments and which ones need help with budgeting, which don't. And maybe, you know, you can use that list to figure out maybe which ones should, I don't know, I think there might be some confluence there of starting the process earlier.
I think part of the problem right now has been the ones that aren't showing up have only come to one meeting. So they, they haven't given it a, a real shot. You know, they haven't, we've done some trainings, we've done our, how we intended the format to go where we talk about, everybody knows what's going on to build the camaraderie and everything, but the particular people that have not been showing up only came once.
Yeah.
And had attitudes when they were at the first one.
And you reached out to them.
Yeah, of course. I sent reminders and I sent all sorts of things. But I also think I kind of understated when I said it's only leaders because I try to have like a representative from most areas of our town here. And I'm also open to kind of having this be when it's in a functional state, kind of like rotate your people through, like send your rep for this month or every other month, whoever you want to like rep for the department, have them come down. And we have like a good training session that took place last week for those of the people who did show up. So we're going over topics that people are interested in too and that are helpful. Emotional intelligence. We kind of started with a, a little bit of a complex one there to start, but, but yeah.
That's good.
So I mean, I wanted to make it kind of customizable for what we're all interested in and what can be helpful on the job also, so.
Yeah, team meetings are good.
Does any, does anyone else have any other questions for Sophia or updates? We owe you, what we have from you, the employee handbook and the elected officials guide. So we're, we're working on those, but we will be in touch.
Okay.
And then, there's no more, well, that's all the policies. We used to do standalone policies, but that's that.
Well, however you want to tackle it too, if you want to get in more bite-sized chunks, we can like meet separately together, whatever's going to keep it moving, so.
Yeah, thank you.
But you did add all the standalone policies into that.
Yes, at least the one that pertained more to like personnel and not like operations, so to speak.
Which ones would be operations and not personnel?
We went, I went through them with Melissa and there were like some that were very like intricate and I'm like the inner workings more like.
Like the insurance, you know, claims one, that didn't go in there because that was very specific.
I don't remember in particular, we went over it a while ago.
There was a few that just didn't make it in there.
Most of them did. And this is like, I want feedback, so like whatever's written, like if something's of concern, like just bring it up. Obviously it's not set in stone until it's voted upon, so I expect you to have feedback for me or like ask me questions. Why is this in here for fires, like?
Any other questions, discussions other than that?
Do you have, I, my only other question would be like, what else is on your agenda for the next fiscal year? Like what, those things, I, we know what those things are, but I'm just wondering if there's other things that you, you know, are on your plan for things you feel need to address?
I know this.
I knew there'd be a list.
Well, we were, so I'm taking on a little more of a role for recruitment, not that that's heavy at the moment at all.
Yay.
I would like to schedule in more trainings, but at the discretion of what issues that are occurring now would be addressed first. I have some projects to take care of with Melissa, but a lot of them are more like personnel files, auditing those in there.
So that's some job descriptions to finish up on, right?
Yes. And some interpersonal things that are happening in the background, just with like advising some of our team members and such. Yeah, but I'm opening, I'm open to discussing some bigger projects we see coming down the line as well. Now would be a good time to put them on my radar.
Billy, the big ones.
Yeah, the big ones are on, are, are in record.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all next week.
Oh, my new schedule starts next week as well.
Bye Sophia.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
It's Tuesday, Thursday, yeah, but she won't be talking about Tuesday, Friday. She said Friday, okay.
But she won't be.
So Friday.
The next item on the agenda is annual appointments and I think.
So the only new one that I added is the veteran agent under one year because Harrington finally appointed someone who just came in.
I can all read these off and then if you have any questions, just raise your concern.
Just make sure that I remember the situation. The way this works is that we appoint them and then they get a letter saying they've been reappointed and they have to choose to opt out if they don't want to be.
Yes, well, they have to get sworn in and complete necessary paperwork. And something that happens in Monterey and other towns is not everyone gets sworn in. And so we have different ways of handling that.
We never really came to a final decision.
And you, your database can actually run a report of who wasn't sworn in or not?
Yes, I mean, we can find out, but the question is, should we audit meetings of volunteer committees and say you weren't sworn in, your vote doesn't count. Lori, you don't put them in the minutes.
No, but I think you can send them by, you can keep a list and say you haven't been, I don't.
We can, I just don't know how worthwhile it is.
In other words, how, do we want to actually do something about it?
It happens in most towns, I believe.
So, so not, it's like this question, so they get appointed, they don't get sworn in, but they still continue working?
They show up to meetings and touch.
Yeah.
I did, this is just the finance committee hat and a risk management perspective. God forbid, anything happens and they weren't sworn in, it's back on the, you know what I mean? Like I think we need to make sure we've at least sent a letter, our database shows you weren't sworn in. I never got one of those.
Did you not get sworn in?
Yeah, I did it on purpose. I did it on purpose to see what was happening in the clerk's office. And one of my committees, so, for the record.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of know.
But, but.
I don't want to say I'm a somebody anymore.
No, that one I got sworn into, but you know what I'm saying. I, I think you should really look if there's any, it doesn't matter if it doesn't happen in other towns. I think you should look at the risk, if there's any risk.
Well, what risk would there be?
That people are making decisions who aren't, aren't sworn in to make decisions on town finances.
So if they thought a forum was there and the person really wasn't sworn in.
Yeah, they're not a forum.
So the vote wouldn't be valid.
Yeah. So I think there's a few groups here. Renewable Energy Working Group, Memorial Day Parade Committee, Monterey Community Center Committee and Lake Garfield Working Group. And all of them are volunteer-based and most are advisory.
Right.
To the Select Board and work at the will of the Select Board, so not have the power to.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, deny permits.
Right, that's what I think.
Make it best if everyone was sworn in.
I think you should prioritize the departments that right are doing permits, making decisions, spending money.
And then like this will sound weird, but somebody like Brian serving as the Regional Hazard Mitigation Team and the, this Emergency Management Director, he's sworn in as police chief. I hardly think it makes a significant difference if he's sworn in individually for each of those.
Yeah.
I think that's something we should check because I had to be sworn in three times, right, so.
Well, I think.
That's a good question.
You know, positions that come with a, with a lot of authority, decision-making power like police chief, it's very important. Like sanitary inspector. So we can continue, if, if anyone has ideas about how to police not being sworn in, we can discuss that in the future. For, there's one appointment with no expiration date, which is Transfer Station Manager Jim Hunt. Now we'll read off one-year terms, so the following are all one-year terms. BRPC alternate, Laura Metzey. Fire Inspector Sean Tryon. Lake Garfield Working Group, Kyle Pierce, Greg Harnazy, Steve Snyder, Trevor Hurst, Michael Germain, Dennis Lynch and an alternate, Richard Jaffe. Memorial Day Parade Committee, Eileen Marcus, Tom Sawyer, Olivia Tuttle, Justin Mayhook. Monterey Community Center Committee, Lori Shaw, Wendy Jensen, Elaine Lynch, Kyle Pierce, Roz Howell's daughter. Wendy Germain, Joanne Bell, Catherine Hurst, Mark Andrews, alternate for that committee, Dennis Lynch. Planning Board Clerk Lori MacArthur. Records Access Officer Melissa Noe, Christopher Andrews. Renewable Energy Working Group, Peter Marquette, Chris A. Dunn, Peter Grilish, Rob Hoogs and Isabel Bronson. Town Accountant Erica Kinsher, CPA. Town Council, New York and Harrington, LLP. Town Treasurer, Mass Muneven. Veteran Service Officer Julio Rodriguez. Police Department Part-Time Reserve Intermittent Police Officer Keith Valley. Veterans Agent Thomas Beasley.
I took them off because they're, they.
Okay. The following are two-year appointments. Inspector of Buildings, Building Commissioner and Code Enforcement Officer Donald Tirico. Regional Hazard Mitigation Team, Brian Fahey. Sanitary Inspector James Willetts. Inspector Wires, alternate, Warren Harrison. Three, the following are three-year terms. Civil Defense Coordinator, Peter Brown. Emergency Management Director, Brian Fahey. Emergency Manager, Deputy Sean Tryon. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Brian Fahey. Historical Commission, Stephanie Sloan. If there are no questions, we'll go on that, that all of the list. So I've moved to make the appointments as read. Second, if there's no further discussion, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, so those are pointed again unanimously. Just briefly on, so it's in all of our minds, the vacant positions, some of which are more important than others. So ADA Coordinator, I had someone who I thought was going to do it and then it dragged out for months and then we never actually pointed them and then I reached out to them before this and I'm here back, but I will reach back out. Zoning Board of Appeals, alternates, two of those, Harris, Holden, Strades. We're still missing a few Conservation Commissioners. Field Driver, I always forget between Field Driver and Defense Bureau, what's optional? I think Field Driver might be optional. Like Garfield Working Group, I don't know that we need.
More?
More. There was at one point a list of who was supposed to be on Lake Garfield Working Group, but I'm not sure if it was official or not.
This is seven people, they, they make a committee bigger than that?
Well, I don't know that they do. I think at one point they had a representative from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, but I don't know that that is helpful. Hopefully the Select Board and Finance Committee stay up to date as needed and go, rebent it to go to meetings if they want. Materials Recycling Facility Advisory Board Representative.
Say that again? I'm, I'm on the map, so that's probably me. I don't know what the official duties are. There's Municipal Advisory Board to the, the MRF, the Municipal Recycling Facility? Isn't that, so I'm on that, I'm on the Municipal Advisory Board. Whether that's the same thing or not, I don't know.
Oh, one also thought about what we're looking at this was, I don't think anyone ever filled the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee. At practice at the BRPC.
I voted for it.
Did you?
I went to that meeting and voted.
Did you go to BRTA or RTAC?
No, they just had a meeting where they appointed someone and I voted on behalf of the town.
Oh, cool. Oh, no, that was different. That was the regional sub. Committee. I would say, but I am a committee. Um, nervous here.
What cares, it's all record of them.
He can't get to it.
No, there's a Regional Transportation Advisory Committee. I think you actually know the young man who was at the table.
Yeah.
I think that's separate from the meeting that he went to.
It is.
Okay.
If anyone's interested.
I'm not sure what you're asking for.
It's hard to imagine it's ever going to actually serve town for in any significant degree, so.
The ones that I think.
It's kind of a population.
The ones that I think are probably really important is Conservation Commission is still pretty short.
So I was going to throw out the idea, should I, can I even get it in, in time? Probably not. Is it worth drafting something like a short theme or the, for volunteers?
For.
For the, for the Monterey News, so just like, this is a really important role. It is, it's a fair amount, I'll be honest, it's a fair amount of work, but the town needs it. It's absolutely necessary and we need people that are deeply committed to the town and to, you know, environmental protection, to be willing to participate.
Sophia and I just sent out a kind of fun one, very dry ones that were going up before. I don't know if anyone else got any response to it or not.
Where, how do you set it up?
On the website.
The Google bird?
Oh, okay. No, the, the town website.
The town website, okay.
Yeah, we've tried a few times.
This one was more of a fun one. I love you, I love you.
I had Sophia write it.
Yeah, pretty good, you are.
Has anyone tried putting something in the, or in the?
We did.
They have in the past, they have in the past.
We have.
I mean, you just never know when you're going to hit the right.
Basically anybody that comes in for a dumpster, they're like, hey, you know, I'm being on the platform.
But you see what I'm saying?
You're getting a discount on that.
You don't know when you're going to hit the one person.
Yeah, but till after they stir.
I would put some signs up for the lake. I would, I would give some flyers to the parking monitor.
99% of your meetings.
Okay, so the next item is the Town Clerk. So I had a thought, which was that the, there's something in the town bylaw on the website because we appointed the Town Clerk for a period of one year. And section eight on the town website says the town voted to fix the term of office for the Town Clerk at three years, beginning with the annual town meeting, annual meeting and election in 1970. Melissa points out that it wasn't written, is not, is it actually, she is not an official bylaw because it didn't have the wording of a bylaw.
When it was put to the town.
When it was put to the town.
Ergo what though? So like it didn't, when you guys accept the bylaw, it has to say, to see if the town will vote to create a new, you know, bylaw. This one just said, see if the town will vote to make the Town Clerk a three-year term.
And my, yeah.
I'm sorry, and what, and I checked at the AG's office to see all of the documents that they have of official bylaws except that this is not in it.
And my, on your, my theory is that it is not a bylaw, but that is kind of an acceptance even though it doesn't say, even though it doesn't reference general law, because it does reference general law, not explicitly. But my other theory is that this is all very esoteric and convoluted. And if it says we should, if we, if it might be the case that we should have a Town Clerk for three years and the town accepted, mashed down the law, we should probably go ahead and do that.
I'm going to throw one other possibility on the table and I'm totally, like, it's just an idea I'm having in the spot, so like.
And don't get it wrong.
I mean, we may or may not wish to change whatever we think is the bylaw or a rule that we've accepted in the past, but at the moment, if the issue is, well, we have a new Town Clerk who's new to the job, who's receiving training and therefore we would have liked to do a one-year commitment instead of three-year commitment to see how he settles into the role and, and how his performance is, I, I'm going to argue essentially, we're, we hired this person, right? By appointing them, we're, we're hiring them. And having a probationary period where you hire someone is not an unusual thing to do. Or having a contract review at a date specified, like in my field, it's usually several years out, but it's pretty common to have a contract review for people at, at their annual review, right? Particularly in the first couple of years to see if there's. Um, particularly in the first couple of years to see if their services are working for the job you intended, right? So I would, this is a long-winded way of saying, if we have to appoint him for three years, can we do a three-year appointment with a one-year probation probationary review? Not because I I I think Chris is doing a great job, I I fully would expect that that would be a positive review. But it's an important role that serves the town, and I think it's important to formally recognize that in some way, that, like, yes, we know this is important. We think it's really important that the clerk be able to do those duties, and at some point, we need to evaluate, um, if that's happening.
I see where you're coming from. I think to satisfy that, the need for evaluation, now that we're doing annual evaluations.
We're kinda doing that anyway, right?
Yes, we're kinda doing that, and it would be more of eight months than a year, ten months, or.
Right.
Um, but it would be close to a year. Um, I think the one other problem with probationaries, I know in the employee handbook, certain uh, benefits, maybe like sick time, or not often.
Oh, right.
No.
No, we get older.
I thought there was something about.
Full-time employees, um, their vacation accrues the first year, but they can't use it till after a year, but he doesn't.
Oh, he's part-time.
I I would just add that I think when the intent of that bylaw was when it was an elected position, and it's no longer an elected position.
Mm-hmm.
But but as, but no, we did clarify, Eileen, and and town council said, in the absence of section eight of the town bylaw, that select board could set the term at one, two, or three years, however, I believe that section eight applies notwithstanding the change from elected to appointed. If you would like to have flexibility on the length of the term, the bylaw should be amended or repealed.
So even though the bylaw didn't say section eight?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's.
She's just being particular.
Well, I, no, but in my, in my, under, it's pretty implied, I mean, it's mashed general law, we're a town in Massachusetts, there's the town clerk. It's, you know, I think it's.
So, I'm sorry, not my, not my place, but, so you you have to have one appointed for three years, but this person serves at the pleasure of the select board because it's now a position and not elected, right? So therein lies the, so, yeah, you have to make them two things come into alignment, definitely within a value, or or serves it three years at the pleasure or at the direction or the whatever the select board.
Well, that's what it's appointed positions do, um.
But I think.
By their nature, and now we're doing annual evaluation, so I think we can go ahead and make the three-year appointment, and and rely on the annual evaluations.
With the provision.
Right, as an opportunity to.
But but I would put it in the, uh, on the town warrant this year to clean it up, or give it to the bylaw committee.
That's right. Well, one, so I went to the bylaw review committee's most recent by updated bylaws I have, and they kept the town clerk, the select board should appoint the town clerk for three years, in it.
In it.
So it made me think too.
So if we wanna change it, then we should put it on the law?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just make it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, cause I think it would make sense to change it, um, but I, you know, I I don't, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous to me, if you hire someone, you hire them. Having to reappoint them every year, like, if you're doing it, and especially since the reappointment is not at the same time as annual review, it's it's strange.
We we see this a lot with CEOs, we give them a contract and we hire them, so what prevails, the contract or the hire? Do you see what I'm saying? You have a contract, but what if you're not doing the job? So you have to just make those two things come into alignment, you know, that says you are, uh, you're appointed for three years, assuming you meet all the terms of the contract at the select board's pleasure or something.
That being said, I would move to extend Chris Andrews' appointment as town clerk to three years, which would bring the appointment till June thirty of twenty twenty-six.
One second.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous. And yes, if we wanna revisit, like Donna said, if we wanna revisit that, we can go to a town meeting, but. The way that.
Not a priority.
Yeah, it's not a priority.
And I think that's all gonna happen with the bylaw review committee work as well. Um, the next item on the agenda is reviewing applicants for the vacant finance committee seat, and at this point, it was in finance committees. Uh, the finance committee was going to review them, so we got three applications, and we had an update.
Well, we have a member of the finance committee here, would you like to give us your?
So, uh, we discussed it, and, um, we had some principles, which was to engage new members in community service, as well as to look for the skill set we needed, which clearly IT is a skill set we need, and we also had a preference that, um, people vote in the town of Monterey that was pointed out, but it's a board member at the finance committee. So, um, you know, I think our preference would be to Roger McDonald as as the member, new member.
So, the way that we did have done this, as we just did a couple of weeks ago, is if we decide to make an appointment, we actually put on the official appointment on the agenda for next week. But I also, in reviewing the applications, thought Roger was a good choice.
As did I. I mean, if we're unanimous, it's, this is like, isn't this like the third time it's been on the agenda, but we didn't have a name, is that what it was?
We didn't have the last question.
So this is just the discussion part, and then we have to put it on, so we have to appoint to give people the opportunity, right?
Yes.
I mean, I I think he's got really, I mean, yeah, it's a town, like, it is big compared to us, but I still think it's good, it's valuable experience, and like, it's can be a little hard to scale down, but it's not that hard.
So, yeah, and both, um, Roger and Don Coburn are on, if you wanna have them say anything, it's both the two candidates, just pointing out. Want them to make a statement, I, you don't have to, I was just pointing to get, if you didn't, look at the owl.
Is anyone got a further discussion of warranted, or should we go ahead and settle, or? Move forward to finance committees or committees?
Yeah, I think we move forward, but we have to put it on next week.
Yes. So I will put Roger McDonald on next week's agenda for appointment.
Thank you, gentlemen, for putting your names in, appreciated.
Thank you for, uh, listening to the finance committee, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
If I don't go, your meeting will be ten times longer with my interruption.
Thank you.
Um, beach attendant appointment, Phil Enoch, disclosure, he's my cousin. The way that I read state ethics law, it's doesn't count as immediate family.
Wasn't there a different person, I saw a different name on something else, did I mention you that? So, okay, I believe you, I'm just trying to figure out why I remember the different names.
Is Peter Marquette coming?
He said he was. No, it is, I just, it's ready. Okay. Did you have questions, Rob?
You have, let me, can you have a question?
No, well, sorry, you got it.
He'll re, he'll report to the park commissioner, right? Yeah. Um, yeah, I would move to appoint Philip Enoch as beach attendant.
One second.
I vote yes. She started with that.
Yeah, vote, oh, vote yes?
Yeah.
Um, for an indefinite appointment. Okay, so the next item is amendments to the renewable energy working group contracts. We'll see if Peter joins us.
Okay.
Um, cause I was, I had questions, or not questions, probably. So, Beacon is still being put paid with ARPA funds, so Meta is just separate. The only thing that I noticed was that, it was just off my memory, I didn't go back to check, but it seems like last time that they, the Beacon proposal was looking at four buildings? Oh, yeah, it shows right here in track changes, so we got rid of highway department garage and highway department salt shed as options. And battery energy storage. Those are the only questions I had for Peter.
Where were those, the page?
Um, exhibit A scope of work.
Page three.
Page three?
Probably picked that.
And I'm just curious why, what led them to get those out of the picture, because then we have to look into a private-public partnership with the fire company, which is.
My understanding of the fire company may be that, you know, as well.
Yeah, so I mean, if we can't have a private-public partnership, and we're only looking at privately-owned buildings.
Why is this?
We might wanna reevaluate, cause I always thought that the town-owned buildings would be a safer bet, since we eliminate that whole logistic of a private-public partnership. Um, and now if those two are being eliminated, we should really consult with the fire company.
There would be nothing left on here.
We should really get a feeler out with the fire company to, um.
Ensure that they're running before.
Yeah.
So what the relief, like, you just have to, you're like, what do you?
Of the renewable energy working, fire company.
Do you, does anybody know why those two were, we don't.
No, that's what I, that's why I was, I was hoping, why I was hoping Peter was here. Um, let's come back to that later.
Okay.
End of your transfers, we have a few.
Yeah, you have four of them. Ten thousand sixteen dollars and nineteen cents from unemployment insurance for your real services. Sixteen hundred and twenty dollars from grant writers at legal. Two hundred and sixty dollars from fire department uniforms, other for CPR training, and three sixty, three ninety, fire department uniforms to fire department other.
Um, if there's no, uh, concerns, I'll move to approve those transfer requests as a group.
One second.
If there's any discussion?
No.
Yeah.
Although yes.
Although yes.
That's unanimous. Um, do you get to vote on the?
No, I didn't, I took my term into summer.
I was just gonna say, when did you, I thought you turned in July first or something?
No, it was last summer, just jumped it back.
I didn't date it, sorry.
Special article carry forwards.
I made a preliminary list, um, which includes the two articles from twenty-one and twenty-two, thirty thousand for the fire company, capital improvements for thirty thousand each. The fire hose replacement, they have fifteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars left there, and Sean did tell me to, I think he said it's been ordered, but I'm not sure when it's coming. Um, but three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents for Monterey school expenses. Eleven thousand one hundred and five for D C W's storm damage, which potentially could be spent for them. Um, and the thirty-two thousand eight seventy-eight twenty for the Eurasian water, no foil for Lake Arquill. Tell you now that community center, I was not going to carry forward because we have been notified by, um, National Grid that they are actually going to install for free because of how much someone they've made us wait for their plans and and all that stuff, so. Twenty-nine thousand, we'll go back to the town.
Has there, has anyone talked to the, where we've centered folks about?
Not yet, we're waiting for something a little more definitive, I I have it in writing that it's for free, but we're just waiting for for a plan that's worked clear of time of the day.
Well.
Good, that's good, man.
It's really cool, right? Two and two lots. This is what I.
Yeah, I think Jim said one's on one side, right, he goes.
Yeah, one sort of near the building and one further up. And they're gonna commit from, what is that, Mollborough? Yeah, instead of from Negro, so I was just waiting for an actual, like, picture that I can show you.
And no foil is gonna be spent soon, right?
Yeah, he he said he has, um, an invoice coming to me, so it actually won't be. Everything else is. But the the thing is, if we don't know, we'll get the bill and pay the bill anytime for the end of this year, so. And I still have a little time, but this is a preliminary, I just wanted to keep your hands.
Yeah, can you please send a copy of that, any of the transactions? Um, ambulance contract.
Yeah, so you said I could reach out to the council, and I just sent you the the draft sample that she gave us, um, because the amount that they're requesting, which they've already requested the first quarter payment.
So they wanted pay, they want to pay quarterly?
Looks like quarterly, yeah, but, um, we can't pay anything until we have a contract because it's over ten thousand dollars. We said it, yeah? Because the amount is over ten thousand dollars, we have to have a contract, or the county will not release the check.
Uh, gotcha, okay.
And a few people had mentioned to me that, you know, maybe we might want to put stuff in there, cause I guess there's been a couple times recently where they have not responded.
From Marburg, right?
Yeah, and then we've had to call New Marlboro a backup, you know, for whatever reason.
I, and I don't know that with a con, with a contract, we prevent that kind of.
No, but I think Donna did say something in there, right?
But yeah, I'm taking three.
Protection such as a guaranteed minimum response time.
Oh, where's that?
She put it in the email on the.
Oh, oh, kind of like, I don't think I have it.
It said, this one was drafted by the company, not by the town, so we want to put in protections such as a guaranteed minimum response time. But if you guys are gonna, like, have to go forward with it, I will reach out to the person that sent me the invoice and let them know that we're working on a a draft contract event, and I can't release any checks until.
I think you should do that.
Yeah, I definitely think you should do it.
Yeah, so we wanna get going on this soon.
What's this, did we get all same?
I didn't see this.
Well, we got this from Donna, so the next step could be a couple of different things. We could review, we could take this in word.
And mark it up?
Mark it up for next week.
Yeah, she sent it to me as a PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, we could mark it up physical, but I did.
Because I know.
Where would we put minimum response time, and what would be a reasonable minimum response time?
Well, you, well, that's something you negotiate.
Well, I don't. And part of the problem is, I mean, there are going to be times, so I think typically, my understanding is they have one on-duty crew at all times, and then they have a second kind of on-call, and maybe more on-call people in the event of an emergency, but, um, I mean, it's, I don't think it should be precluded from the contract that sometimes the two Southern Berkshire ambulances may be somewhere else, and we benefit more from using New Marlboro, Otis, or Santa Field. Just because, we wanna make sure that we're giving Southern Berkshire a lot of money, we want services from them, but there's, we're not gonna, you know, get worse.
But it's more important that a person gets help.
Yeah, than that it's always from Southern Berkshire.
Right.
Um, I don't even know if we could prevent dispatch from dispatching a a mutual aid ambulance, even if we wanted to, I think they could.
This is a sample, so Tops Field is not actually relevant, right?
No.
Okay, and is it worth putting something in there that they have to give us reports on a monthly basis as to how many calls they actually responded to in Monterey, and? Do we need a monthly or yearly?
Maybe what their response time, I think month by year is that the years.
Do it monthly or quarterly?
Once to, you know, send it right in, quarterly with the invoice, yeah.
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 Quarterly with the invoice, would you?
Yeah.
Yeah, quarterly with the invoice, um, maybe we could also have, you know, number of calls that Southern Berkshire's dispatched, but another ambulance ended up coming, not that one is unacceptable or two is unacceptable, but if it's uh, increasing pattern, that's a problem.
If it's the percentage of the calls, you have to say that.
Well, it gives us an opportunity to look at what's happening.
Like if it's fifteen percent or something.
Yeah.
There, without the data, you can't, yeah, you can't monitor what's happening, so it's reasonable to ask for the data.
This contract does have one twelfth of the payment monthly.
This one, so this is monthly.
We could change it quarterly, Southern Berkshire wants it quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly.
That's how they send it.
Where is the paragraph that talks about?
Uh, page two top. About payment.
You have force measure. Ah, gotcha.
Now, the only other question I had about this is, it mentions an RFP, we don't have to put, we have to put it out to, um, RFP and then New Marlboro and Otis and Santa School could bid on it, because frankly, we don't. We don't, we want Southern Berkshire.
Yeah, I think we just wanna do it.
Cause they have the best service, so I hope it's exempt. From that kind of procurement because um.
God, the thought of a bidding war with ambulance companies is. I understand this, you have a New Marlboro though actually regional. Ambulances. Or are they just for their town?
They're.
But they, but they cover um.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
Yeah.
But they're not a regional ambulance like Southern Berkshire is.
No, and they're not, they're not advanced life support.
So it's not really, my guess is that, but I don't hope, my guess is that because they. Are really only for their towns that this were kind of limited because this is the only provider that offers this service.
Well, we could just say we want twenty-four seven paramedic advanced life support and that would. Uh, we need Southern, I believe, it would only be Southern Berkshire.
Oh.
But I don't know if we have to go through the sense.
So this contract came from Donna? No, Frank, I'm sorry.
Well, and I, I'm curious too of other towns. That are forking over a lot of money that Southern Berkshire. Are due. Yeah, and then if they are or they aren't, um, may, well, maybe if someone else already did it. Or maybe they didn't, they probably didn't, but if someone else already did it, I'd be curious because, because maybe we can look at the data too.
Should we look at the other town, which I love?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
If they already did a contract, then maybe we can look at what they did, see what's within us. But we will take that back up next week, please timely. So the next two items, I'm gonna recuse myself from, the fire station lease, I've been advised before that.
Well, you're not.
What's that?
You're gonna excuse yourself?
Yes, I will, so. I'll be back. And hopefully Peter comes soon. If he doesn't come, we'll have to touch base on that.
He told me a couple of weeks ago he was gonna come.
Peter? Things come up.
Uh, um, should we do item six?
Yeah, so, um, as I understand it, um, the. Should we, moderate community center committee and the current coordinator Mary have asked to change her title to community center director, I believe.
Yes, that's right.
Um, I personally don't have a problem with it.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to change her title to community center director.
I second that motion.
Um, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, yeah, that one's done.
Aye, um, the fire contract?
Where did the lease come from?
Well, I compared the old, so I did a little bit of a homework on it.
So there wasn't a lease?
There was an old one that was sent by Kim. It's uh, was dated uh. Um, it's really word by word, it, what changes, it was dated in twenty, uh, June seventeenth of twenty twenty. I, I think we should go beyond a one-year contract.
I think it would be nice to have either a three or a five-year contract, but the only trouble would be that um.
Five, that's what I put in.
I would imagine rent may change, so I know Sean, Sean is not in favor of it here, or this year, for this year. Okay, I mean.
But do you know why? What draws that?
Because he wants to. We have to figure out how to make a, an agreement of how the rent will change. Because otherwise, we're either guaranteeing that the rent stays on change or.
Well, you can do it.
Well, his board, well, his board votes on what they're going to charge us, I guess, is my understanding.
Okay, what, what? I, well. I understand your point, uh. You know, it's not a deal breaker, put it that way, um. I do have, um. You know, you get back into the back of the contract, John has proposed, okay, what, this is what I'm suggesting is. First of all, we have awarded them warrants from the um. Last few years, so he has, and there's thirty thousand tied to this year.
Right.
So he has, what, ninety thousand dollars? We should acknowledge that warrant and ask for details on what it's gonna be spent. And if he was spending it. For policies. Okay, in other words, you know.
Which would entail what exactly?
Well, it would entail, she'd get multiple copies, multiple visits and things like that, it keeps us informed of what's going on. But it asks him to define how he's gonna spend that money. Cause, okay, and then what I would do, he has a list of projects in there, it's about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. What I suggest is, in the future, going forward, that he submit capital. Budget, you know, something we can put in our calendar year, this is what he would like to do, so we get it.
Like he does with equipment.
Well, it's like with equipment, so he should do it by the building. And then we have on our agenda is the um. You know, we have a capital policy that we talked about about a month ago, maybe longer. That says, you know, here's the policy, here's the kind of paperwork you need to do, there's, there is some paperwork to do it, but we're spending a lot of money. And we also have a lot of pressure on them.
Right.
So, you know, what I would suggest, instead of listing, listing out that. Information, I wanna do this, we say, okay, tell us how you want us to put it in the spreadsheet. And then every year it'd be up for him to say, well, you know, I wanna do this.
I think that's gonna be deferred, but I think this project needs to move out.
Well, yeah, and he, he follows the policy of the police department and the department of highway. Select board decides, do we wanna pass it on to the towns for a voting? And the town votes on it. I, I get a little, cause it's um, the way that it's uh, worded, you know, that uh. You know, it'll be considered by the select board in reaching this decision regarding the budgeting of additional funds for improvements to buildings. It's on the, it's on the back page here.
Which is the number?
There would be, it doesn't have a page number, lease or renewal. It's under B.
Oh, okay, appropriate.
Yeah, but you're saying that we do the, the select board, the select board decides votes on whether to put it as a warrant, right? For a capital, we would do that and then the town would vote on those dollars, you, the way that I review.
Which is more or less what happens now.
I know, but it'd be more defined.
Right, and I think it would be good for the people to know what the money's gonna be spent on, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask. You know, he doesn't like it, but that doesn't change anything. If we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars renovating the building, we ought to know what's being done.
Well, we know what's done, but I think you look at the history, they have been supporting, I'm not saying.
And I don't think that's gonna change, but I think that it's not unreasonable to say, can you please tell us what you're planning to do? What do you think it's gonna cost and when do you think it's gonna happen?
So do you want me to work on a couple paragraphs that we could try to adopt and then have the lawyers look at?
Um. Beyond what this is?
Well, yeah, I mean, he has here, basically. You get through, when you go through, this is sort of like the condition of the premise, you know, he pays the electric bill, you know.
Ah, okay.
So that, you really get into the details of it back here on the, on the last two pages. Where the re, the lease renewal and how these capital projects would work.
So are you saying you wanna put in a couple of paragraphs that, that basically flesh out A and B from that cover page?
Right, mm-hmm.
Okay. It, it makes sense because they're already listed on the cover page, but they're not actually in the lease, which is. Good, sorry.
Well, I, I, I think we need to touch that there is ninety thousand dollars in there. You know, by saying, by the signing of this contract, you will have, the town has set aside ninety thousand dollars in warrants. Okay, how's that money gonna be spent? What is the plan?
I, I agree, I, I'm just.
And then moving forward.
Are we gonna get into a problem that, that, do we have to change the date of the initial lease? Is that gonna be a problem going forward?
Well, we've been on. We, it, we, you know, it's on a month-to-month, it's working, his rent is not changing, you know, it's not like he's taking it off ten percent.
Yeah.
Or something like that, so it, it's really the. You know, my opinion is that this detail needs to be flushed out a little bit.
It seems to me that those items should be in the lease proper and not just on the cover letter.
Right.
I would agree.
Okay, so I, I will work on paragraphs.
That'd be great. And then we can come back to it, I mean, you know, wording it may be tricky, but I definitely think that it's an appropriate concept, so.
Yeah, I would, I would also ask the lawyer to take a look at it because the lawyer said that. I know what he says board, but when we talked to the lawyer about could we give him capital money, they talked about a long-term lease. They didn't talk about a short-term lease, remember when we talked to the.
Right.
They talked to it. I, I don't have a, you know.
Do you have a sense of what a long-term lease is? Is that, are we talking a twenty-year lease, like?
No, that, I, I, I would never do a twenty.
No, but you see my point, right?
I, 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 I put the same thing in my notes, three to five years, they told the lawyers, uh. You could put inflation factors in there and stuff like that, you know, that if rate of inflation actually get high.
Right, to be negotiated annually or something?
Yeah, it could be done like that, I mean, I, I, you know, we're not, I, I just.
I mean, I, I do think that we need it to be longer than a year and if Sean is resistant to it, then it won't happen, the question is why?
Yeah, but I, 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 that's what Sean's requesting, I think he goes to our legal counsel.
And say, we, we need to.
We're the one.
His board is.
I know, but his board, but I, his board doesn't represent the town.
No, but if we're leasing from him, isn't this actually his contract to give to us?
No, you, I've done lease agreements, they give you, they give you the first draft and then you start modifying it. It's not.
In, in the end, it's a contract, so both parties have to be willing to agree with it.
Well, I mean, that's the way it is, you know, someone has to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, like, basically, this is in principle, everything's fine from my perspective. We need a little language that flashes out the two things on the cover letter, which he agreed to since he's the one who sent this. The only issue that we have, I think, that still exists is that the lawyer is saying, in order to give him that money, it needs to be a long-term lease.
It's recommended.
And one year isn't long enough. And that's a problem, given that we've not only given him money, but we're giving him more money. And I'm happy to give him the money, we're just saying we need to have a longer term lease. Um, and if the rent is the issue, we need to figure out a way to make the board comfortable with that. So, but that's on him, like, cause it's his board, not ours. But he has to recognize that the lawyer is saying, in order to keep funneling this money to them, it has to be a long-term lease, and one year does not count. Right, so. Getting that idea across might be important, so that he can work on them to say, like. Yeah? I don't know, but you know. It's not our, like, that's what the lawyer is saying, the fact that it went unnoticed for years, doesn't mean it wasn't a bad idea. It just means nobody paid attention. Yeah, and it is what it is, now that we know, we kind of are obligated to do a better job.
Well, we've been advised.
Yeah, to do a better job. So, okay.
All right, um.
Justin! I think we're done. Dear, sorry, it's nothing personal, but this storm woke me up repeatedly last night.
Thunder.
No, the rain actually.
The rain was horrible last night.
Just the sound. Does anybody have a good rain gauge at their house?
Um, I had a wheelbarrow that was supposed to hit West Street.
I, I had a bucket that straight sided and, but it was two days, I think it's like four and a half inches long two days. And what I'm more surprised at is both that there was, there wasn't as much road damage as I expected. Um, and they were out there fixing it, cause he does, he wants to make sure that future events don't cause a problem, and. Things are not, like, there's some water standing in my garden, but it's less than I would expect. What's going on at the park is everything, and that is.
Oh, I'm, uh, yeah.
Have you, have you formally changed jobs or you don't need a part-time?
I've pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
You're over at the, I'm late.
No, I'm working, Mickey.
Oh, man.
Wait, Mickey Mickey?
No, not Mickey.
Yeah, yeah, pretty sure.
So is that full then?
Yeah, cool, um. So.
So review lunch or go to the prayer?
Yes, and then. Yeah, I mean, so basically, we're tacking a couple things on here. Um, already.
Wow, big surprise.
The fire station lease and the Southern Berkshire.
Ambulance.
Ambulance assessment. Another thing that I think I'd add was the open space advisory committee. Because I remember, I don't know when we need to worry about it, but.
Tell my list to Frank.
Do we need? Do we need to like, can we appoint an already existing? Do they want us to appoint a new open space advisor?
Yes, I have specific people, I don't have to list.
Okay.
Specific positions, I should say.
And then, but BRPC is interred to that.
Yes. Well, you're gonna be in charge of.
Applying people. Um.
Do they have to be Monterey resident?
Probably.
Just checking, because the way that was phrased, it could have been that we were applying to your senior, it's gonna be.
Okay, but so, so for instance, similarly, I think, if I can relate the two imperfectly. When the master plan was ongoing, there was a, basically a master plan committee. But the planning board served as it. Which I think made some sense.
This is gonna be made up of different, like, one from, I think, it's like planning board and. Concom and, I can't, I don't call it in parts, who knows?
Um, other than that, hopefully we'll cross some things off the list, huh? Um, or add some. What do you think of them? Um, I do have a couple or one unanticipated business item. Cool, but before we get to that, really, we should handle the renewable energy working group and how we wanna move forward with these contracts. Um, in lieu of Peter being here, we should probably try and get Peter here. Uh, in the future, but because we do have those questions about.
Do you wanna at least fire off and mail to him saying this, and that, I mean, that's a pretty big concern, if both of the highway.
Yeah.
One's are crossed out and the fire department pulls out.
Cause your energy renewal meeting this week.
Do they post on Thursday on there?
Yeah.
Do you have?
It's at Thursday at five P M.
Okay.
And then review amendments needed. Need minutes and procurement scenarios proposed by Beacon, um. I had thought before, when we had seen this, that, okay, we have two town-owned public buildings and those are kind of the same.
But now they're, right, but now they're part of the stock.
And now those are off, um. So maybe we need to figure out why.
I mean, there may be a good reason for it, but it is a concern that that leaves the only buildings.
Yeah.
Under the fire department, and we're saying he might not be, they might not be willing to do it, then we're out of stock.
And we need to get, yes, we should at least feel them out to see whether it's worth continuing down the path.
Um, Frank said you'll, you'll go to meeting Thursday, but I think we should give them a heads up so that they know it's a.
I, I had reached out to Peter about meeting with him and he said he was coming to the select board.
So, then something may have happened, but since we've discussed it, it seems like sending him a, like, email saying.
Yeah, I'll send him an email when I get home.
Yeah, this came up and this is an issue for us, and yeah, okay.
Other one, it just be the business?
I got one.
Well, I do have one.
Okay, you go first.
No, you.
Come on.
We'll do an alphabetical one.
Throw him out there.
Yeah, what?
Yours is mine's C A.
Uh, I've had three people contact me about the Clark Road decision.
Yeah.
So I've had email, phone calls and in person. And I, you know, I, I got the notes, I, I don't know much about it, uh, I got the notes and what I read in Monterey News. I printed out the meeting from November and then they're go back to two thousand fourteen, but. Uh, those PDFs on our website are not searchable.
I can, I have all the relevant sections ready to go, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I would like to do it, the one suggestion was that. Uh, that someone suggested to me was that we have it, put it on the agenda, if someone wanted to come and ask us questions about this. I'm, I wasn't there, so I, I can only read, I, I was planning to go back and watch the video from last November. I don't know how you guys feel about doing something like that, if they could come in on unanticipated business, we could say. Monterey News, we're gonna discuss this this week, if you have something you wanna do, I'm.
One important thing to know that I think wasn't in Monterey News that, and wasn't. Was left out of. The letter.
Yeah.
Was that, um, this, the, what we voted on is not the same plan as that original plan.
Okay.
It is substantively different. It, I believe, what was it, either eleven or fourteen trees that were being taken down in the plans back then involved more poles. This is fewer poles and only two trees.
Yeah, it was like six or eight poles now or something like that, I forget, I, I printed out the National Grid.
It's fewer poles and placed differently, so it's not the same plan, so to, to start with the proposal, the, the assertion that. This is exactly the same, and it was turned down, why they do it, isn't the same plan. And I, I don't know what I would have thought it had been, but it wasn't, so that. And, and I feel like it's. And I I don't know what I would have had it happen, but it wasn't, so that, and and I feel like it's a, from my perspective, I'm happy to talk to people again. But from my perspective, it's a reasonable compromise to get somebody power, um, and to not damage the trees.
But what was, someone told me about taking it in a different route or something?
Yes, but the the important thing to realize is that the person who wants the power under the way National, and you can argue that this is a ridiculous way to do it, but this is how they do it. That person has to pay the entire cost themselves, and they pay by the pole.
Yeah.
And to come in the other way, what was the current figure due on that one?
The coming up Sandersville Road has always been essentially double, or or roughly double, of coming down Cronk Road.
Okay.
And coming from Sandersville, it sounds like is more or less a dud, because it's, they, it's not also National Grid, they use a different energy supplier.
Right.
And National Grid has to, yeah.
Work together.
National Grid has to agree to them being serviced, and they won't.
So I will forward you, I have the minutes from Au- from August eleventh, twenty fourteen, September eighth, twenty fourteen, October twenty seventh, twenty fourteen, and December fifteenth.
Four, I have my fourteen hours.
And I think. I'm, I'm very, uh, willing to engage with people if questions and have comments, and I have actually had back and forth with some of the most, um, concerned residents. I don't know that it's worth putting back on the Select Board agenda unless we are entertaining, um, unless we are entertaining reversing a decision that we had made, because there's not. I mean, everyone can look at the minutes, everyone can look at the video, and and make up their own mind, and if they have questions or concerns, I think all three of us have always been more than, uh, willing to. To discuss and engage those concerns, but I was aware. I haven't been, nothing has been brought to my attention since the meeting of substance that would make me want to reverse the decision. If it did, then I don't, yeah.
And I I realize people are, you know, want to know more, but yeah, I've also fielded several calls. Um, and I felt like at the end of the call, the people understood why we made our decision, because they got information that wasn't left, so. And people are seem unwilling to necessarily watch the video, they could, but they don't.
I know, um, but I get another point, you guys have done a lot to develop the credibility of the Select Board in the last eighteen months. So, you know, it's like, you know, I know there's gotta be a reason for what they did, it wasn't, it wasn't taken lightly, you know, that they, and so, you know, that's, you know. And I think we, you know, I think the three of us can keep that momentum.
Let's try.
Nikki?
My answer to these people was, if you come Cronk Road, it's X dollars, if you come Sandersville Road, it's two X dollars, right? So if the people who are objecting to it, if they say they will pay the difference, then certainly we couldn't come up Sandersville Road.
It it was suggested, and the response was that they couldn't afford that, and my response was neither should the people that want to bring it in.
No, I mean, so if that option is given to them, yes, it will go this other way, you know, because whatever, you you can pay the difference.
Thank you, I I felt that way too.
Yeah, and and I think everyone probably agrees as well, you don't like to maintain just someone's neighborhood that, you know, makes them like the last, it was a hard decision, and. You know, we just, we did, for what we did was completely legal, and I think it was, I think even it was courteous, because we did actually listen to people who came and brought concerns. Just because you listen doesn't mean you're you're going to agree, but we listened and we made our decision.
That's your job, is to listen and then make the decision on what you think is the best information to have, you know.
And, and, you know, there there was no solution that was going to make everyone happy, it was just not possible, so.
Okay, I will forward, is anyone else want these minutes?
Wait, so did both of your issues were the same issue?
No, I got one other.
Okay.
Oh, I have one too.
Okay, you, how about you go ahead?
Um, Catherine Hurst brought my attention that there's someone has a food truck. I just found this out, someone has a food truck who sometimes sets up in Great Barrington, is wondering if they might be able to set up in Monterey. And I, I guess it's not really the Select Board, it'd be the Board of Health, that would have to have to handle it, but they did have questions about potentially setting up on town. Property that being the beach name link, which would really be the Park Commission, I guess would probably handle that, but.
Oh, I.
I thought it was exciting.
I I would, I'm I'm one.
I'm only favored.
If they're there between five and eight in the night. Nobody feels like, oh, they don't.
Yeah, right, especially if you're pinned at the beach.
You don't have a mod at the beach.
So.
Did Catherine bounce with her food?
Well, I will follow up and and just send her to the Board of Health, really, about, uh.
And maybe, and the Park Commission?
And the Park Commission to the beach, yeah.
I know we did get a call about it, so they may have.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got a call about someone that sounded like this.
Yeah.
And and they forward them that thing, but please help me out. Yeah, why not?
Parking man, wasn't he? Parking sticker.
Set it up as a drive thru.
Uh, I have a question, do we have a car policy? Someone asked me about that.
A car policy?
See if you, if you use a vehicle, a vehicle policy, not a car policy.
I don't believe so.
For for what?
Well.
Like, for using a town lease?
Well, it's my understanding, like, one police officer will take a, you know, their own call at night, and they take the vehicle home. What is the policy for using that vehicle?
Or going to trainings or something.
Or going to training, what are the, is it any kind of written policy on it?
I know we put something in the chief's contract regarding these vehicles, but I don't know.
But I think now we have.
Yeah, no, there's a, but you're right, the both for training and for.
They're they're using it outside work.
I don't know.
Yeah, I remember actually, I think Scott had said, when this came up, um, during the last board, that that'd be a good thing to have a policy about. But, do you want to look into it?
I'll take a look at it, I got, along with that, trainings and the municipal training.
Yeah.
So I got some contact, probably down.
Yeah.
Was it helpful?
Yeah, I thought it was helpful, especially about the open mall meeting.
Of a meeting, yeah.
That, that, there's more, it was like, Facebook, because that's not a question, it's a question when, yeah. No, it was, it was informative, plus you, I got some good contact with people, so.
Networking.
Yeah, so, I would definitely recommend it.
Where was that one?
It was in.
Devils.
Devils. I was in Dead Hand, that's four, Devon.
Need them and dead them.
Yeah, okay, that's where they are.
Any other unanticipated business? Comments and questions from Nikki?
Um, well, I don't want to bring this up, because it was brought up extensively and heatedly at the last meeting, and you were the only one who wasn't present. I am just gonna give you the paperwork and leave all discussion aside. I've had enough discussion on it, and there were too many questions about it, and I am not capable to put it up in your screen anything, and mine as well. So, that's that. We can look at it, and maybe we can put this on the agenda another time.
Is it the same as the email? Is it, oh, it's the email that I sent you. No, except I think it's not, there's the other one. Because if this was the one that she gave to C A, right?
I I mean, I don't remember when I.
Well, I'll copy.
That is the one I gave to, um.
I mean.
I mean.
I'll co- I'll co- we'll copy it.
Yeah, give it a copy and. It was well discussed, yeah. It'll, it'll well, it'll well discuss or something, anyway, uh, so I just, I'm done with it.
Okay.
And, uh, maybe I'll see you next week if I'm back.
So, do I understand correctly, Nikki, just looking at that quickly, that the cover letter just is about the the cost?
Yes, yes, that's all it is.
I was reading over so fast, I didn't make sure I admitted.
Minutes.
So I gave my. No good minutes, because I didn't get on my freaking email. I think I had one minutes that I sent already, that we wanted to prove, because we weren't here.
Yeah, well, last week, oh, I had a lot, because, well, I went through the video.
Yeah.
Because it it, I'm not critical, because I couldn't make that any better. You get into, you get in these dimensions, and I thought that I would go back through and just sort of highlight some of the dimensions, because people are asking me, how wide is it, how, you know, what's the physical?
Can you add those in the document?
Oh, I had them in the document, I was making notes as it was flowing, and then I was saying, okay, that was at four thirty-three on the video. It's took the first twenty-nine minutes of what's, what's, what's her name, but I I, you know, I got to doing this, and then I just ran out of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
But I I don't, don't. It's, I'm not criticizing it.
That's the thirteenth.
The only, I mean, this is the thirteenth.
The only really good thing to do to avoid, um, chaos would be if we could deal with Susan and I's comments on the thirteenth, and get it to Frank, and then make your changes.
Okay, okay, um, I think I know that.
Otherwise.
Ah, so I didn't get the changes from Susan? On the thirteenth?
Because our computer.
Thirteenth you did? Wait, no, that's what I was asking. Yeah, I don't. So do I just?
So.
What did I last send you, the sixth? I know that I sent, because the sixth I have, and I, the thirteenth I don't. Um, I think I must not have done the thirteenth if it were. But now you've talked about my consent around Justin's changes to everybody.
Yes, that's what we would do.
And do, we, uh, what happened with the sixth, did we ever approve of?
I believe so.
Yeah, I thought we did, the only thing we had was last week's.
So we have the thirteenth, the twentieth, and then from tonight.
Not probably.
And the twentieth?
That was the first call, it was, it was, I read through it, I was like.
Yeah, twenty-two, no problem. Yeah, so I did not actually, it looks like I didn't do anything, so.
Everything was tabled.
Sixth are already posted, so. Okay, so it's just the thirteenth, and so, yeah, if you send me his, then please don't forget that, and you can enter yours. It'll be your first experience.
And please, um, yeah, you're gonna email Peter about the various contracts.
I'm gonna email him, because I was, I was trying to get caught up, and he said, I I'll be at the Select Board, maybe we can do a thing.
Yeah, oh, one thing to know.
I'll copy you guys on it too.
When you're entering changes?
Yeah.
Um, one thing that we came up with that seems to work is that if it's a small change, put it right in the text. If it's a big change, it works better if you add it as a comment, it'll come up with your comment on the side, and if you highlight the part that you're suggesting you change, it'll be clear what you're suggesting, but that way you can see, instead of having like the cross-out things, which gets super confusing.
I was thinking about doing some bullet points, like, it'll be this wide, you know, some of the things, more the, kind of, you know, people ask how wide is it, you know, there's things that she went in there.
Okay, I see what you're talking about.
You know, but I gotta, I gotta go back through it, um.
But sometimes it's just easier if you're doing strike-through or you're changing wording, if it's one or two words or a few words, you can do it right in text under the review. But if it's a big change, it's easier to put it in as a comment, and then we can accept the comment, because otherwise it gets really confusing when all three of us are trying to make changes to the same thing.
So I'll stick on the comment, because I'm aware of this.
Exactly, it just makes life su- way easier for for us, in the end. All right. Cool, sorry about that.
No worries, no. Frank got it missed last week, we called it, so.
Well, I sat down to do it, and I'm like, well, you can't access anything, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that stinks.
I know, it's really.
Once in a while, I'll get an email for a couple hours, and it gets broken.
Well, that's like, it's sometimes it just goes like dark, so she can't do anything.
I know, it's very, we're so dependent on it now. When it goes out, you're like, what?
But it's Microsoft, you'd think.
And why only me?
No, it's, I texted him one night, are you having, he goes, no, it's fine, but I've never, I finally voted it off, but it's been on my cell phone, and I've always been, I've used that.
The cell phones were fine?
Yeah, cell phones.
For me, it was Outlook, so I don't know if that would have fixed it.
I do either. But I, you use an Outlook app or the web browser? Uh, Susan, do you use that app or the web, or just a web browser?
Oh, do you think that could be?
It's a web browser.
Yeah.
You think that might be the trouble?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know, but I use it on a web browser, and I haven't really had.
This was the first time, this is what the. I logged into three other accounts in the web browser, and I ended up, it was just her.
Yeah.
It was Susan.
So you're saying, you're saying it was operator error?
No, I I watched her.
Do you remember your password?
Well, I worried about that, actually, but I I did.
I I would tell you, there's a password manager I use now, I only have to reuse one password, it's the highest rated one, it's the best tool, that's twenty bucks a year I've spent.
Is it password one, two, three, four?
No, I don't know, I don't know, I don't do that, I I got, I did away with it, I got hacked years ago, I I.
Yeah. Um, no, I did remember the password, and, uh, the weird thing was that, like, like I said, I I thought it might be my internet, I thought I re-rooted, I thought it was my computer, I tried on another computer, it came in here, I tried on the internet here, we tried on a down machine, it was just, we, because then we were like, maybe to go back. But no, no, it was Outlook. And why just me, I don't know if this is enough, like.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Uh, although, yes.
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 Meeting adjourned unanimously at seven twenty-six P M.
And gentlemen, I want to.